Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the Salem Township Planning Commission meeting, June 17, 2024. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:31. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Conne, here. Ross?
Here.
Hansman, here. Lee Vandalski?
Here.
Agloffen?
Here.
Merlow?
Here.
Rizzo?
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted for June 17, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the June 17, 2024, agenda as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening and welcome to the June Township, June Township Planning Commission meeting. The copies of the agenda are in the back. We do have two public hearings tonight. If you wish to address the planning commission during public comment, please come forward to the podium when recognized, provide your name and address, make sure you've signed the sign-on sheet, and please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. There is a public hearing on, two public hearings on the agenda, and if you have comments about those applications, we would ask you to please save your comments until that agenda item so they can be part of the record for public hearing. If you have any cell phones or other device that might be disruptive, please either switch it to silent or turn it off. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pretty formal, isn't it? Okay. Public comment. Chip person comment? None. Public hearing. This time we'll open the public hearing for the text amended drive-through window in local commercial zoning districts. We'll open, right?
Yes, sir.
Yep, open the public hearing at 7:34.
If you would like me to give a brief explanation of the proposal?
Yes, please.
Okay. So you have in your packet a memo from us outlining this, so I'll go into just a little bit of detail, but happy to answer any additional questions you might have. Ultimately, the applicant has presented a petition to amend the zoning ordinance to allow for drive-throughs in the local commercial zoning district. Currently, drive-throughs for restaurants are only permitted in general commercial district and the highway commercial district. Both of those areas are generally centered around the area of Godfordsen and M14 where we have planned urban services. Typically, drive-throughs are kind of recognized as a use that is more auto-oriented and more consistent with some of those uses that would be in the general commercial or the heavy commercial district. Local commercial districts have tended to be reserved for some of those more kind of neighborhood commercial uses that are serving that immediately surrounding community. We put in the memo that you have, the standards that apply to those uses in the ordinance, so those are, there's about, there are eight of them. I won't go through each of them, but they are intended to ensure that that use is compatible with the other uses in the area and that they function appropriately. We also put in the ordinance, kind of the intent from the zoning ordinance for that local commercial district, and that's really just kind of what I described to you, is that it's supposed to provide for those residents in the immediate surrounding area and not really a regional kind of commercial type of use. So that's from Section 10.210 of the zoning ordinance. So just so you know, and there wasn't a lot of detail put in the application, the application was just essentially we want to do drive-throughs in the local commercial district. The applicant is representing the property at the corner of North Territorial and Pontiac Trail. There are few local commercial districts that exist in the township, and those are all along Pontiac Trail, and there's one on Seven Mile. So there's really just a few of them. The master plan does call for those nodes along Pontiac Trail and the intersections Seven Mile and Five Mile and North Territorial to be local commercial. So if you saw fit to recommend approval for this, if this zoning text amendment did get changed, then that drive-through use could be applicable to any one of those local commercial districts. They did not indicate whether they wanted to make that a conditional use or a special use, so that's something for your consideration, and didn't indicate any other standards that might be applicable. So if you did want to move forward with this, you might consider other standards that you might think would be appropriate in order to make that compatible. And then with all rezonings or text amendment proposals, there are some findings in the zoning ordinance, and we go through in our memo and kind of outline what those findings are that you should discuss as you go through your discussion after the public hearing. So with that, happy to answer any questions you might have, or, you know, after you hear comments from the public, I could answer questions at that point as well, too.
Question, Paul. Instead of changing zoning, you can come with, you can get a special permitted condition type use without changing zoning. Correct?
So that use is either permitted in a district or it's not permitted in a district. Or it could be a special use in the district, but it has to be listed as a special use in that district. So Table 20 of the zoning ordinance indicates all of the uses in all of the zoning districts, and that table indicates whether that use is a permitted use in that district, an accessory use in that district, or a special land use in that district, or not permitted at all. Currently, this use is not permitted at all.
Does the applicant get to speak here or get to ask any questions?
You could ask, yeah, I mean, if the applicant wants to give a presentation, you could certainly ask for that now.
Would you like to speak?
Sure.
I put the application, and the reason we put the application, it's an intersection that already has no residential adjacent to the property and is one of the kind of like private type locations on two major intersections, North Territorial and Pontiac Trail, and we thought that it would be convenient for customers to have a drive-through available to them that if they go early morning to work or they're coming back late, they can stop at that location and just drive through and pick up a snack item or coffee and go and do their daily routine. So we don't have no restaurant in the place, and we have no intention to open a restaurant in that location.
So is it just out of your store, just items out of the store?
They do sell sandwiches in that store.
Okay.
They sell sandwiches, and they are in the supervisor, and they do sell no items, but they do not make any kind of food, no fast food.
Do you think that with that type of a store and the traffic that you're trying to serve, the customers you're trying to serve, that it would be, it's feasible to, I think it's going to be some sort of limit on to what thing you can get through the drive-through, or?
Well...
Is there, when I walk into a store, it takes me a while to get out of there unless I know exactly what I'm looking for and finding, you know, there's a lot of things. I'm just trying to envision what your vision is.
Well, the drive-through in that location, we serve basically to the people that they come early morning, they want a coffee or a snack that we sell, or they want a sandwich or maybe some soda that we can also sell in the drive-through.
So it's like a limited type thing?
Yes, okay.
Is it, I think you'll be open 24 hours?
No, we will be open from 6:00 to 10:00.
So, Paul, just in general, thank you very much.
Do you want to finish getting comments from the public and close the public hearing and then we can...
Oh, yeah, that'd be a good idea. Yes, ma'am.
I didn't see a sign-in sheet, I apologize, but my name's Amber Wardia, and I just recently moved into the place across from the former, will be former Eas Market at North Territorial and Pontiac Trail, and I opened a cafe there. When I saw the building was for lease, it was using a drive-up system, so that was part of the reason why I leased the building. I thought, you know, that'd be great for what I was trying to do there. And as soon as I signed the lease, I was told that I, by the township, that I couldn't have any type of drive-up window at all. And so I definitely support drive-ups. We also open pretty early in the morning, and a lot of the customers have gotten used to being able to drive up, and they, they think that we don't, they think that it's our decision not to let them drive up anymore, and I have to explain that the township allowed it during COVID, then decided not to allow that. And it's very confusing for the customers, and, I mean, even though we're post-COVID, I think a lot's changed with people and how they shop. People really do like to do the curbside pickups and drive-throughs. They, I think they have a lot of social anxiety now. I'm noticing that with my customers, the ones that do come in, a lot of times people tell me right away that they've been wanting to come in, but they weren't sure what we were all about. I had someone come in today, and she was really hesitant to sit and eat her, her food that she bought because she told me she has social anxiety, and I think that's a byproduct of COVID. And I think that people are really used to just going and doing the drive-through, they're busy, and I know change is hard, but I really think that's a natural progression for just consumer habits, and it's not like it's a downtown with people walking around, so I don't see it being an impact to like any pedestrian activity.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Kim Rockall, Salem Road. So I would like the high intuition to consider the applicant, if it's going to have a drive-through, do a traffic study. Obviously, that area has a new flow pattern with the roundabout. It's got extremely heavy traffic. The last couple of weeks it's been really heavy. And with the impact of having a drive-through, how did that modify the roundabout and the MDOT and Washout County Road Commission studies that have been done there? So we see a number of accidents out there. I'm not opposed to having drive-throughs, but it's going to be important how that comes on and off those main thoroughfares, and I think it's incumbent upon the applicant to do a traffic study to prove that whatever they're going to do is not going to impact that roundabout.
Paul, what we're talking about here is changing the ordinance so that anybody in local commercial, we're not specifically talking about this address, correct?
Correct.
So, good point that, yes, it may apply to here, but that would apply to, that would be something we consider to put on there contingent to a special case in a local, or something along those lines, so a traffic study or something like that.
It might not be inappropriate for all drive-throughs, yeah.
Right, but what we are talking about here is for any local in Salem Township. So this, we consider this, we do something like this, it's for Seven and Pontiac, it's for Seven Mile Road, it's for Five and Pontiac or wherever else.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I also didn't see the sign-up sheet. Doug Strover, I have the property...
Sir, we didn't put one out.
Anne's cringing over there, that's okay.
We have the property at some Pontiac Trail, a garden center that we're developing. I was kind of forced to do a traffic study, too, before I could do the development for my site plan submission. That really wasn't what, the reason why I'm standing up, but I did want to make that point. When you're talking about a drive-through type situation for any of the local commercial, would that also include, because I know, you mentioned post-COVID. A lot of the stores still have like a pickup area, like where you order something and you have a pickup area. So would these two things, would it mean the same thing? You'd be able to drive in, knock it out of your car, or come out and pick it up? I just wanted to have that thought about a little bit, because it could be, it could be kind of the same thing, where you would like order something out of line and maybe you could come pick it up. So I think that they might mean the same thing, even though they're worded differently.
Probably you will find the differences between a person parking in a designated area like for a pickup of something, as opposed to a series line going through with it all being serviced at one point. A pickup could be, you could have five people walking out and delivering to a customer at the same time, whereas, you know, a drive-through kind of implies that maybe it's one point, maybe there's two windows or something like that, but it's a series flow through that. So traffic, parking, pickup traffic could certainly be different here.
Yeah, I just was kind of thinking about where a point was, the post-COVID situation, how things kind of are working nowadays. That's, like, no?
Linda?
I oppose the traffic setting, they're pricey, and you can handle vehicles in the drive-in window, it's handled on the site plan through how you stack the vehicles. And having been probably one of the few people in the room, they have put through the wringer trying to get a drive-through window for property in the township. You guys know what a traffic study costs? And you want it for a small business, and we're trying to encourage. Washout County handles the roads, they're their roads, they have rules for site distance. We shouldn't be doing Washout County Road Commission's work, we should let them do their work. Don't take on somebody else's heavy. And when we got our drive-in window, Paul worked with us on how does it stack within the property. And that, that's a requirement you ought to consider, not what happens on a road that the township has no say over, because somebody comes in here and tells you that's the idea, that's ludicrous. Furthermore, the whole purpose of a roundabout is to slow speeds. Yes, there are accidents in roundabouts, because a lot of people don't know how to beat them, but they're at a much slower rate of speed than the intersection would be if it was just a normal flow of traffic where one direction stops and one just now. And Washout County, again, with the Road Commission, it's right on their website why they do roundabouts and what they believe the benefits could be. Thank you.
Anyone else? Can I extend a hand over here? No? If I want, so I'm twice? Okay. So we hold the public hearing at 7:50? The next public hearing? Do we discuss, Paul, or do we go to the next public hearing?
Discussion.
Okay.
Well, I guess we should amend the ordinance or amend the, excuse me, agenda of the discussion.
Yeah, it's all closed.
It would make sense to have a discussion.
Yes, it does. So how do we do that? What do we think so?
Take a motion to amend the agenda right now. Discussion after each topic.
Yep. We have a motion to amend the agenda?
Paul, make a motion to amend the agenda. But a discussion after each topic.
Do the business item. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have all the time. Do we have a second?
For the motion?
Yes. Because you guys both said at the same time. Okay, Daryl, okay, thank you, Daryl. Okay. Does the roll call, or does it have to be?
Voice vote.
Okay. All those in favor of amending the agenda to have the new business item discussed after the individual public hearing item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Text amended drive-through window in local zoning district. Do you have any questions?
I think we need to...
Oops, okay. Kevin?
I think we need to look at, especially with the new roundabout that was opened, and not necessarily a traffic study, but we do need to look at how that traffic flows and how it would flow in and out of these businesses and what it would affect that roundabout traffic coming in and out, especially in the morning.
And the location of the property?
Yeah, I think, I think there are a lot, a lot of questions with this one, but we have to remember we're not just making an amendment to this particular location, we're opening it up to the other ones as well. And there's, there's a lot involved in space. I know we've discussed that property before, and we thought it was pretty tight, but I don't know if there have been changes since then. I know there were a lot of space requirements in regards to, in regards to stacking cars to keep them out of the road and, and not impede the traffic within the other, for the other aspects of your business on the site. I think we need to look at how it kind of, how it changes the face of our community. I understand that COVID has made an impact on a lot of things in people. I think my questions and first priority would be, how does it impact the look of Salem Township as a whole? As an agricultural meeting, does it, does it fit with our, our vision and the master plan of putting drive-throughs in the local commercial? I do understand that in a small business and trying to meet those needs, and there aren't a lot of residents right around there, so that traffic, the pedestrian traffic isn't Anyone else?
There are setbacks also, 100 feet from any intersections or two public roads, there are setbacks that have to be looked at.
That's true, it is in general, not necessarily reasons in local. Right, we're talking about creating a whole new zoning ordinance. Can I ask, the way this public hearing was posted to the public, how did it need, because if I were living at Seven Mile and Pontiac, and, you know, I understood that the piece of property that I'm built next to was coming up for possibly being allowed for a drive-through usage, I would be here. Right? So I'm, I want to make sure that the public, and the public was clearly informed that this could affect, this wasn't talking about Pontiac Trail and North Territorial, this was talking about Seven and Pontiac, this was talking about the, the store, you know, I'm guessing it's the store right up here on Seven Mile, Country Fair, Best Fried Chicken and Roast Chicken. Anyway.
The Long Cabin Store, that's the Long Cabin Store?
On that trail.
He was also talking about the ones...
Yeah, so...
What's that?
So that's, I want to make sure of that, because if that wasn't done cleanly, then we probably have a lot more people from the public that may want to have their voice heard. So does someone have the, what the notice read for what was a public hearing for tonight? Yeah, so the, the public hearing indicated that there was an application for a text amendment. The public notice indicated that we are holding a public hearing to consider a text amendment to allow for drive-throughs in a local commercial zoning district. It is not required, when you're doing a text amendment, to send it to property owners, it's just required... To the specific addresses. Because there's no particular specific address associated with this. Okay, so they, you know, we said belt and suspenders, they've been properly... Well, it's been, it's been notified through newspaper of local circulation, and that's the only requirement that we have for them. Okay, thank you, Paul.
Yeah, that's generic, and people don't read those, so they're not...
Yeah.
Yeah.
My only issue against it is I don't know what the flow of the traffic is going to come, how is it going to go into the window and go out, because you've got Pontiac Trail to the east of the corner, and the only end of the property is north of the store currently, there's an opening right there. And then on the south side, on Territorial, is just the one end, the west side is almost the line. And there's, now how is that traffic going to get back out into the circle at that time of the morning or that time of the evening? Because you can only, for a drive-in window, you can only go in one way and out, out the other, you can't come in both ways and go out the same way you came in. Unless you go around the whole facility, but then you're obstructing that entrance for the drive-through.
But once again, we are not addressing, I don't know what the new business, well, Eas Market, everybody here knows that it is Eas Market. We are not addressing specifically Eas Market and their conditions. This gentleman is simply the catalyst for trying to change the language that would allow his property, as well as many other properties within the township. So we, we can't just consider his case and be making it pending how this would be handled or that specifically handled to allow. I think we have to back to, what's our zoning ordinance say? What does our township plan say? And what are we as people on this, with this duty to the township responsible to do? So I think we need to back right back up to the plan, the township plan, as to what as we, as part of this group, sit there and do, protect what's our mindset to looking at things like this, changes to existing or new things as they come in.
And Bart, and I, I agree with that 100%, and that's why I said one of the things we want to look at is, is to start with our master plan, does this, does this, is this included as part of the vision for Salem Township? And Bart, you and I may have been one of the only ones, we addressed this drive-through thing a, a number of years ago, and I think part of the intent, and correct me if I'm wrong, or Linda, the intent of not having drive-throughs was to keep it more small-town, slow-paced. So that was the intent back then. I know a lot of things have changed, I don't want to be a curmudgeon or anything like that, but, you know, what, what's important to me is I feel as, not me as an individual, but me as a planning commissioner who's been here and have heard multiple people speak about keeping our township as, as rural and as agriculturally friendly and not, and be cautioned, I've been cautioned, we've all been up here, been cautioned on the slide of expanding the commercialism within our township. on the slide of expanding the commercialism within our township. And I think that's a question we should all ask ourselves. You know, does this do that? What is the impact to this? Is there any impact at all? Does it meet with the vision? Yes?
I don't think your vision deals with my new shit, should a business have a drive-in window or should it not? I think part of the vision of business in the community is that we want we want certain services available to the public. People want food, or they want to get gas, or they want whatever filling the plane. And your role is to make sure that it's the best for the community, but you also have to allow businesses and tools to be viable. Because if they're not viable, they can't operate in Salem Township. And what I'm hearing from these businesses, and I would concur, because of COVID, there is now an expectation for businesses that never did it before that you can drive through and pick stuff up, or as you guys already referenced, you can park. And so I think that's what you're facing now, is that these businesses, to be viable here in Salem Township, to make a go of it, need to go to the next progression. And so I think that's what you need to ask, do we want to retain business in the township? If so, what do we need? And you do the same thing for agriculture. We already do it for us. And I think you just need to take that same mindset to your businesses tonight for you. Thank you again.
And that is another thing. That's why I'm saying there's multiple things we need to think about and look at. The whole purpose of local commercial is to serve the surrounding community. So that's the given, right? That's the given.
If I may, is it okay if I ask another question?
If you could wait and we'll let the planning commissioners and then we can... What's that? That's true. I know. I know she seems like she's part of the plan. So that's all right. I apologize. I would just want to try to see if we had any more questions out here, because she's almost cut, you know what I'm saying? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
With my building, having a drive-through may not even be feasible. What about a drive-up window? Does that fall under the same category? Because that's what the flower barn is doing, is a drive-up window. And where we clearly mark one entrance, it's just the entrance, and one is just the exit, and people can drive up.
I don't understand. I'm sorry.
I mean, ice cream stands, wait, it's not a...
Well, I'm curious about the question with the pickup. You know, how that's impacted too. It's hard to debate all this stuff. We don't really have a plan or anything. We don't really know what it looks like. There could be lots of options. That's why we need to think about all of them.
I think windows are, that's all we got, a different subject or a different deal.
If you're driving your vehicle up to a window and getting something served to you from inside, it's the same.
If you're driving up there and they're bringing your private door out to you, is that what you're talking about?
No, instead of going all the way around the building, they would just drive up to the window and then ask the other side. So it's not like a drive-through. I guess when I think of drive-through, I think of going all the way around. This would be just like a drive-up. And a lot of ice cream stands do it. They have that speaker, but it's just one designated window. And those are in small towns too, and those have not more pedestrian traffic.
From a practical standpoint, it's the same. Whether you're, whether you're hewing around the building or driving up in front of the doors.
How does the customer then if you do it your way? How do they know, how do you know what they want?
There are speakers that you can buy actually online, and it's a headset that you wear, and so it'll beep when somebody pulls up to that window. You can communicate with them right from your kitchen without going to the window, and then you can take the things over to them. It's a little screen.
It's a drive-through. It's all drive-through. Everything's a drive-through. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you pull up and somebody runs something out, that's different.
If you're pulling up into a parking space and somebody's bringing something out to your car, that's different. You could go inside or they can come out to you. That's a different situation altogether. Because then you're in a designated parking space.
So I apologize, I should have done some other comment. I live on Pontiac Trail, Blue Street, I live on Pontiac Trail. And just like, you know, since most of these businesses, local commercial are on Pontiac Trail, that's a tough road for pulling in and pulling off of during the traffic hours. And it's all the way from Eight Mile all the way to the stop sign at Dixville. Except for the few spaces in between Seven Mile, you know, the mile roads that have no business on. You can maybe get in and out, but I have a hard time, even when traffic slows down, getting from Six Mile on Pontiac Trail, or getting out of my driveway and getting into my driveway. Sometimes the traffic is back up, and I'm close to Six Mile, the traffic's back up, even with the turnaround, all the way back to my driveway. That's three quarters of a mile. And it's very, it's just a high-traffic pass-through road. So just please consider that if you're making a decision to do that. Pontiac Trail is a pass-through road, it's high-traffic, high-volume flow, and the road commission's been building that for years. That's why we have to turn around.
You see a lot of changes in Salem Township compared to 40 years ago. And you see more and more software goes about, problems every year. More and more cars come to the community. So it's not the days of boats and buggy. We don't see, we see pickup trucks run at and out of the road, SUV. So of course, those businesses, they're not going to spend tens of thousands of dollars to create a stressful way of doing business for themselves and the customers. I'm sure a lot of these places, that local businesses, they're going to go invest their time and money, the engineers and special people to, or the township, to just put a window. It has to be convenient, it has to make sense. And like the Flower Show, Craft Street, they, it will help them that they don't have to have too many people come inside. They could come to the window and pick up whatever they order. Either they order online or they order by phone. So they would not create a bunch of people come from another or come from Brighton in conjunction on this intersection. So I think it will not be just spread all over the town. So maybe some people, if it makes sense for them, maybe they're going to do it. But if it doesn't make sense, they're not going to go. Even if we get approved or she gets approved, I don't think everybody else is going to just follow down on this case. It has to make economic sense for them and safety. And we did study, we have engineering, that they stack the cars on their drawing. I think the township has a copy of that. It's probably going to come up, that it shows on the, on their drawing, it shows the safety and the way that these cars will stack up and how they get into the property from North Territorial, how they get into the property and goes stacked up behind that window from the Pontiac Trail. So all these issues, they've been considered in the drawing of the site plan.
Yeah, I believe when we worked on the plan for that corner, that was kind of during the traffic circle consideration, but what the traffic circle changed in design from what I believe we originally saw on paper. Not that that's where the Hillbeards wrote, you know, just FYI. Yeah. When you saw plans come through for Edith's in the past, the drive-through or the roundabout was not part of those. Right, it was, here's how we come in for fuel stations, the two different islands, how many cars could be in between, how to make the swing, how to make the turns out on the Pontiac and North Territorial. But guys, once again, we're here as planning commissioners to interpret, protect what we're charged to do by our township's plan or master plan.
The traffic is already there. That's not really the... That's not really, the traffic is already there. It's not really the issue. There's a lot of things going through in our brains, I'm sure. But, and it's just a high-traffic area, and we're a cut-through community. Everybody's cut through. These businesses are just trying to capitalize and take advantage of that, which is a good thing. It's a smart thing to do. I mean, we, we need to, what's that? Oh, sure. So I understand that. I don't think there needs to be a traffic study, unless Paul says there needs to be, from our ordinance, but I mean...
You have the ability to ask for a traffic study with any site plan that comes through.
Doing, okay.
So if you want more information on a particular site plan, if something looks like it's particularly problematic, or you're not sure about what kind of trip generation a particular use would have. Certainly, if you were wondering about the potential stacking space needs or something like that, we can look at chip generation manuals, right? Like so if McDonald's goes in, we kind of know based on the location, the traffic counts per day, and what a typical restaurant like that takes, we would know kind of what the stacking space needs were.
And that's different than what we're talking about here. We're talking about local commercial, right? And it's small businesses that service that local community, our local community. Just how they get through, how they get through the property and the vision it is with the master plan, is that correct?
If you were to move forward with something like this, and your intent was that this would not allow for something like a McDonald's or Tim Hortons or something like that, we would have to craft the language very specifically. Because again, the request was vague. It was to allow for drive-throughs in a local commercial district. Local commercial district does allow for restaurants. So if we don't, if you don't want to see...
But aren't they limited on size and all that, right? Then I've seen some little itty-bitty Tim Hortons too.
Right. So you, again, think about what you want to see here. And if it's not that, then, and you do want to move forward with something that would allow for a drive-through for a small local business, we've got to make sure we craft the standards in such a way that you're not going to end up with a, you know, chain fast-food restaurant that would fit in the criteria that we end up allowing for. Does that make sense? So if you end up providing direction to us as staff to update the ordinance and put some language together that would allow this, I need to hear from you what it is that you do and don't want to see here.
I think it's important we get all these ideas and throw them out there, because once somebody makes a suggestion, that's why there's some of us. You know, it brings about more questions, and I think that's a good thing. It'd be nice if we had more public here too.
Can I just ask you a question if I can say something? Paul, if the board decides to allow drive-throughs, can, you know, you might allow one at Pontiac Trail, North Territorial, but one might not fit with their scope at like Seven and Pontiac, Seven and Pontiac Trail. Can't the board at that time make that decision of what they're putting here? Now, from what I understand, working at Edith's Market, is they want to add, I know that still is on the table, about adding gas pumps. Might be a whole new building, you know, what's that scope going to look like? And it's going to be hard to make a decision if we don't know what else is, what are they planning there?
So there is a site plan that has been submitted. It changed iterations a couple of times over the last month, so we didn't have enough time to review it before this meeting. In addition, they are showing a drive-through, which is currently not a permitted use. So if the planning commission and ultimately the board accept a change in the ordinance to allow for a drive-through, we would then review that site plan against the standards and the ordinance for drive-throughs. And as I mentioned, there are eight standards right now that may or may not be sufficient for what we're trying to do if you do decide to allow for it. So if you, if you said yes, drive-throughs are permitted, use are a special use in the local commercial district, subject to those existing standards, then we would review that site plan against those standards.
So it might be denied if it doesn't fit?
If it doesn't fit those standards. You could also say that it can only be a standalone use. You can, you know, I mean, if you don't think that it would fit well to have that in conjunction with a gas station, that could be a restriction that you place on something like this if there is a legitimate reason to place that restriction.
Pam, I do think that we should look at it further, because I don't think it would be fair for the smaller businesses just to say, well, we don't allow that and not discuss it. We weren't making any changes until we're on that line, because we're here to help, you know, the smaller businesses in the community. And we can't be stagnant on this stuff. So I think we do need to wait on it, talk about it, make some changes.
We're here as a whole for the community, not just the small businesses.
The small business, I mean, they are here for the community.
Yes.
And...
Uh-uh.
Tony, exactly how, are there three areas in the township that are local commercial or for? Four, is it from on that?
There is one on Seven Mile, the party shop on Seven Mile.
Seven and Pontiac Trail, is it?
No, in the middle of Seven Mile.
Oh, okay.
Country Fair.
Okay, that's local commercial.
And then the Seven Mile and Pontiac, Five Mile and Pontiac, and yes. And those areas are all designated in the master plan as potential local commercial areas. Not by parcel or anything. There is a node basically. There's a star in that area. So there's the potential that other properties in those areas could be rezoned in those three nodes along Pontiac Trail. This, the one Country Fair is what it is. No, it's zoned, it's zoned local commercial. It's just not really planned for any local commercial expansion in that area. But if you change the ordinance to allow for drive-throughs, they could potentially apply for one there as well. They'd have to redo their site plan. Does that answer your question?
I mean, a standard local commercial designation, you know, looking in here, doesn't really apply to our area, because it's talking about, you know, foot traffic from adjacent neighborhoods. There is none of that. And with two acre minimums, I don't see that ever being a bunch of foot traffic. So, you know, there has to be another way of, I mean, we have local commercial. We'd like to have some commercial businesses there. So I mean, I think as a community service, I think a drive-up is compatible with serving the local community. They aren't Starbucks. It's going to be a lot of people that are traveling through there anyway. It's just, will it work on the parcels? And I'm assuming that engineering and you would determine that this is just not going to work on this parcel, or yes, I think it can support, you know, the traffic.
Based on those eight standards. That's how we would review it. Ensure that there's stacking space, to ensure that the, you know, drive-through is not going to conflict with traffic coming to and from the site, that it's not going to create backups onto the public road. So, you know, those are certainly considerations that we would make on an individual basis for each parcel, each property if they came in and applied. What's the situation look like for someone that may be on agricultural residential and wants to get rezoned for local commercial? What, I don't, I don't understand your question. Someone has a piece of property, that's, I'll say, a lower commercial use than local commercial. I don't, what's the next one down? I don't... There is, there's no... Okay, so it's by rezag or something? Yes. Okay. So what does, what does it look like for a person that's rezag that wants to cut off two acres, make it local commercial, get it rezoned for that, petitions for it, comes to this meeting and goes for that, and then puts up the drive-through, opens a McDonald's franchise? So if that parcel was in the area that was designated for local commercial and the township allowed for the rezoning, then any of the uses that are permitted or special uses in the local commercial, they could apply... they could apply for and go through that site plan process or special land use process? And if you, if you change the ordinance to allow for drive-throughs in the local commercial, then that would be one of the things that they could apply for?
How many corners at Pontiac and North Territorial are local commercial? Is it just the two? Who's it all for?
I have a good tentative. Coffee, flower shop, Eda's, and I don't know, that southeast corner is...
The dentist's office is office commercial, the other three corners are all local commercial.
So the one that's wooded right now, southwest corner is?
That triangle.
Local commercial.
Local commercial.
My dad would say, be careful what you ask for, you may get it.
In fact, you know, that, that local commercial zoning kind of stretches on down on the south side of Pontiac Trail going towards Dixboro as well. Like Romanoff's, that whole area is local commercial as well.
All right, Paul.
How common is it for a, and you might not know the answer, that's why I'm just throwing that out there. Like a chain business, you know, McDonald's, Starbucks, to build on an area with a well and a septic?
Good question, probably unlikely. But I don't, I don't know. I guess I, I guess I wouldn't. Wouldn't have the extra chance to answer the question.
A regular septic, engineered septic, a septic system? And one? It is a, I'm thinking it's a detriment.
I'll look into that.
Very low possibility.
Probably. I mean, it's probably not, not part of their standard model. It's probably not part of their financing model, it's probably not part of their insurance model, but I'd certainly can look into that.
Who'd an engineer field kind of put the cobbage to a McDonald's? Because it's done differently than a regular one?
Been engineered field and a regular field.
A septic system.
Yeah.
You have to have because of the ground, it doesn't hurt. If you go to an engineer field, and it's raised, it's not like the septic tank put into the ground and it's hidden. Engineer field, you can tell, I mean, there's a mound of dirt.
Sure, I'm familiar with them.
And I don't know how, if we limit to just two acres? Or maybe the property at the, those corners should be larger than two acres for, for local commercial. And, but then you open the door for, for chain places to pop in if they don't have, they have to put the septic system in and drill a well.
I mean, that would all be regulated by the county health department, they would make a determination whether the proposed use could fit whatever septic system that they were...
So all that would go through the site plan as well for someone if they wanted, you know, to have their commercial? Is your, your property's well septic, right?
It is, it is well septic. So the minimum lot area for local commercial is one acre. On well and septic is 20,000 square feet if there's sewer available. But there are no, there are no local commercial areas planned in any area that has sewer available, so. So one acre, one acre minimum for a local commercial.
Oh, no, it's a new question. Will they comment?
Oh, yes, sir.
I was wondering if, if the commission could allow Paul to review the whole site plan? And maybe they will be more comfortable to read and see the whole thing? That they'd be more fair to the township and fair to us? So that they make a decision based on seeing the whole traffic flow? They cut some of the buildings, actually a portion of the buildings, so maybe made it shorter in a new, new layout? So it's going to be thirty, forty feet farther away from the road, from the North Territorial, in order to create more space for the, for the gasoline pumps and for the parking and all this. So I think if we review the whole site plan, then just look at it and if it makes sense for the township and for us, if for us makes sense, that's why we try for this part. We want to make sure that it's fair to all parties.
I think, I think you're right. I think there are a lot of unknowns that we're all thinking about right now. And it's difficult to make a decision when there's so many unknowns. It's not just your property. When these things come in, you know, we've got a, a small business in our community. We are always trying to help and support. What we're, what we often struggle with is predicting the future and, and the unintended consequences. I think, for me, those are, those are just the questions. It's not, you know, somebody zipping through for a coffee and a sandwich, I mean, that's, you know, that's, it would, it would help your business, I think it would be great for your, both your little businesses. It's just that, the unknowns and we're, us trying to be prepared because we put our names on the bottom of this. We, we don't want to do it, want to be completely prepared, thoughtful to our whole community.
By all means, I mean, you could, so you could, there's a couple of actions you could take. You could postpone action and direct staff to draft a resolution recommending approval. But we don't really have any solid language at this point. You could postpone action, direct staff to draft a resolution recommending denial based on any findings that you've made tonight. Or you could postpone action and direct us to craft some language that might be more consistent with some of the discussion that you had tonight in terms of protection of, you know, the rural character, et cetera, so.
I need a list of all points of things we should be thinking of when considering this decision.
Well, there, there are...
Not necessarily numbers and units type of engineering type of stuff, but, you know, look at this, this is a way you may look at this. Think, think on this, how would it affect here? That's a way of looking at it. Put some weighting against those things and go.
Well, so, so those, there are findings in our report, we've made some suggestions there that I would encourage you to kind of go through and think about at this point, if you'd like. I think you, I think you've touched on many of those topics tonight as you've discussed.
We have an urban service district.
You have an urban service district.
We have a urban system, service district just for a purpose. We created it for a purpose. We wrote the uses of that for a purpose. And it's all protecting what the master plan for Salem Township wants us to do.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to postpone action and direct staff to make changes to the proposal language for drive-throughs for restaurants, fast food establishments in the LC slash local commercial zoning district as discussed at tonight's meeting for further consideration.
I'll second.
To draft language, so if, if approved, that language would go into the zoning ordinance? I am for certainly investigation beforehand, event talking points, not just, I'd like to understand certainly a lot more of cause effect in all these things.
Well, we can, we can, so you, you've got a motion on the table, I'll, I'll let you guys discuss first.
Discussion mode.
If you, if you want me to answer questions, I'm happy to about what we can do.
Yeah, I think the proposal that's on the table is very fair. We don't want to stifle small business, and certainly, being a small business owner, I understand where we're at. You know, obviously with the master plan, things change, right? COVID happened. The way business changed. And we have to be flexible with that. I think the recommendation on hand is fair. Let's get some more information and consider other different avenues. And certainly move towards supporting small businesses however we can. We can certainly draft language to protect the integrity of what we have going in Salem Township. But certainly if we can support small businesses in the way they provide service, certainly we want to move towards that direction and at least consider the options we have, so. I'll approve that direction.
You got, you got to update the the zoning books. They're at first before this decision can be made. If we're going to update it to allow a drive-through with any restrictions that we put in it, the ordinance, then bring the gentleman back and go from there. But the ordinance has to be updated first in my eyes before we can go anywhere else.
If you're intending to do that, yeah. Could I ask one to clarify the question? So in the, in the motion, you referenced fast food restaurants, but in your discussion, I kind of heard the idea that we don't want fast food restaurants.
Guys, this is discussion point of the motion, right? We've had a first, we had a second, now we're discussing. Okay, so you want, you want to support business, you want to encourage this, that, and the other. How many different drive-up services can you name right now that you wouldn't want? To protect the rural atmosphere and feeling of Salem Township when other areas in this township are specifically designated and allow businesses to have a drive-through? I am not here as my, my own person with an opinion. I am here to protect the township master plan. That's what I signed up to, that's what I took an oath to. I'm not here for, I like these things, I don't like those things. I have an opinion, yes, but that's not what I'm signed up to do. So I'll clearly say, I'm, I'm not for drafting up a change to the ordinance because of two businesses knowing the potential of the other one-acre lots that could be put up with drive-throughs that would all have to be discussed, hopefully properly mitigated in a zoning ordinance that would clearly go through all these points that were, I don't know how much, how much could be discussed in, in one meeting, or how much can be thought of in one meeting? Guys, this is huge. How many acres, how many acres are unused right now at Pontiac and North Territorial? Ten, fifteen?
Yeah, of the local commercial.
Yeah, there's a dozen, there's a dozen or so, okay. So not that, you know, the bobs and rouse of it are going to come in best to best, worst to worst, are going to come into play, but you're talking about ten to fifteen drive-up somethings at Pontiac Trail and North Territorial if you just make a change like this. You're talking about how many acres at five in Pontiac? There are areas in this township where people can develop and do this. Yes, we have two businesses at Pontiac and North Territorial. One can still be a gas station because it's grandfathered in, if it wasn't. Right, local commercial is, not typically allows service stations, gasoline service stations.
So, sorry, the, the legal non-conformity of that gas station has long since passed. But you did update the zoning ordinance to allow for small gas stations in the local commercial three or four years ago? And so this is the first of which would, that would be coming into place?
That's what I'm trying to say here is, or we'd like to see us, not necessarily align with me, I have my own ways of doing things obviously, but have a mindset of what our duty is here.
Well, that's why we want to, that's why we need more information. We have to start with the master plan. That's why I said it's what it's, what it looks like. I wasn't trying to, you know, play devil's advocate, and the implications of what's going to come to that. I say what does it look like, but the unintended consequences is what we always talk about. And that is not just these two businesses, but what is, you know, have we all looked, have we all looked at the, at the map and thoroughly assessed in the last couple of weeks since, since we've had this, to see what can go there? You know, that crystal ball portion. I, I think that's important and...
And what we're proposing right now is for a draft to be made up that in next month's meeting could possibly be approved? And it has.
It's discussion too.
No, no, yeah, no doubt, no doubt about a draft being made up.
It says to direct staff to make changes to the, to make changes to a proposed language, so for drive-throughs and blah, blah, blah. So it's something that's proposed, it's nothing, to me, that's us, that's more discussion.
Okay, so we're not saying...
We're changing it.
We're not saying draft up an ordinance.
So we can change it next, next month?
Okay, I interpret that a different way if that's in...
I'm not saying I'm right, I'm just, that's just the way I read it, because, well, it doesn't matter.
Could I go back to my clarifying question though?
Yes.
Well, no, just in terms of fast food restaurants, is that part of the intent or not?
I don't think Salem has ever wanted a fast food restaurant in a local general commercial where they can go right up the road and get one.
So would you amend your motion then to remove the word "fast food restaurants" out? I mean, is that what we're saying?
Well, unless you were to say no fast food restaurants, I mean, but that's what it already says, right? Or, because you said in the beginning, you know, this could, this could happen. So when you're taking direct staff to make changes to the proposed language for drive-through restaurants, fast food, so you could just kind of clarify what we want and what we don't want, is that? That was my takeaway from that thing. Not that, yes, we're going to put this in here, but it's like we need another layer of clarification to get through the weeds.
Well, so in, in that language, I think we were understanding that the intent was that this would service a fast food restaurant. So if we don't want fast food restaurants, that's what I'm asking.
I think we don't all know what we want yet.
Hang on a second, hang on a second. Let's just go right to these people, let's go right to these people that are sitting here right now. Is a drive-through coffee shop a fast food restaurant? Is a drive-through sandwich shop a drive-through restaurant? So we're saying we could possibly draft it, but then take out and make illegitimate the, the two folks that are here asking for this change to be made? So then how do you differentiate between a one, we're, we're talking franchise, not fast food? We're talking a franchise. Okay, I want Panera there. Okay, great. Now is it a defendable position? Panera says, you allow this mom and pop shop that everybody loves, they know the owner by name, you know, we've had a longstanding relationship, you let them come in, but we don't allow a Panera to come in? Panera's got lawyers. How do you defend that? How do you defend that?
I'm just asking what your intent is.
Yeah, no, I'm getting those points that I'd like to more so discuss of what are the ins and outs of this? What are the things we really need to consider before we even say, yes, we're going to change the ordinance? Got fifteen Panera breads going in at Pontiac and, and North Territorial, let the best business win.
We're not saying we're going to change the ordinance.
No, I understand.
It's discussion.
I think we're good, I think we're good.
I think we've already gone through all of the things and the questions and the concerns of this. And I think, I, I don't think it's going to hurt to have more discussion on this. Do we just need more discussion on it? What do you think? I mean...
We got a motion to take.
Okay, so do, but do we need more guidance from Paul of what things could look like? Because it's kind of like the battery thing. It's so open-ended, it doesn't, it doesn't provide enough guidance for us to get to the end. Okay, so so does this, did I read it wrong, or?
I, I probably would, I've only heard it once, so I guess I'd probably need to hear it and go from there directly.
Is that what you're reading? Is that, that we need more investigation, more material?
We have to address this, and yes, the language that's going to be drafted could be proposed language for amendment. That's what it is. We got to talk about it, understand it. When they, when Paul gives us the information, I'm certain he'll give scenarios around the information, and we can further discuss it. But we need to see if we're taking this step, what it looks like. That's a fair conversation to have.
Absolutely.
The board, put a stamp on it after they say this is the way to, to meet, that goes to the board, and if they don't like it?
Well, it may not even, it may not even be approved by us.
Yes, either way.
So, okay. All right, so we've got the motion. Got a second? No, we didn't.
I think Daryl seconded.
Yeah, I did.
So this is to create discussion just to see what it's look like? We're not going to have a draft that we could approve next meeting now and put into place?
Sure. Sure.
We could, we could.
No, I do want a draft, I want a draft too. I want two things, I want to see what it looks like in a draft, and I want to see, you know, what the discussion points are. You have to consider all aspects of this, so I think we should just leave it as is.
We don't have to like it, just have to vote on it?
Okay, I agree.
All right, okay.
Mike, I like the way you explained it, thank you.
No, it's fine, no, it's fine.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote.
Tom?
Oh.
Right. So, this is the roll call vote on the motion to postpone action and direct staff to further make changes to the proposed language for drive-throughs for restaurants and fast food establishments for the local commercial zoning district as discussed in the eighth meeting for further consideration. Tom?
Yes.
Frost?
Yes.
Huntsman, yes. Levanowski?
Yes.
Glockland?
Yes.
Muro?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
May I ask a question at this point? This is make, I'm sorry, I just thought of it literally after I just said, yes. Proposed, make changes to the proposed. What is the proposed? That is, I mean, there's wording in here, but it's not, this isn't a...
The proposed language is to allow for fast food, or to allow for a drive-through in local commercial.
Okay, but it's just a statement, it's not what we'd like in ordinance at this point.
So, what we would do is put some draft language together for you to consider, react to, make changes to, et cetera.
Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing for the text amendment, commercial battery energy storage in the agricultural residential district, opened at 8:43. Paul, did you want to do your brief summary?
Sure. So, once again, this is a request to do a zoning ordinance text amendment to allow for and regulate battery energy storage systems in the township. So, as you all recall, we brought forth a memo back in March talking about the new legislation that's coming forward that will become effective in November, wherein it essentially preempts local zoning regulations to cite these three different renewable energy facilities. So, solar, wind, battery energy storage. Currently, you've got a solar ordinance that we updated and a wind ordinance that we updated a couple of years ago. We did not do anything with battery energy storage. If you recall from our memo, commercial scale facilities that are above a certain megawatt capacity would fall into that category that the state would regulate unless the local ordinance, excuse me, the local municipality had a compatible ordinance. So, you could pass an ordinance that would be compatible with what the state regulations are and then maintain your control. There's still some questions about a few things that they aren't specific about that potentially could be a test. If you drafted an ordinance that had some of those regulations in it that weren't addressed to the state legislation, that may or may not fly as our ability to regulate them. I'll talk a little bit about, more about that in a second. So, for battery energy storage facilities, the 50 megawatts is the capacity that would fall into that category. And so, the ordinance that was presented to us essentially indicates that that is the intent, is for those facilities over 50 megawatts. They essentially kind of mimic our solar ordinance, which would not be considered a compatible ordinance or a CREEO per the state legislation because of some of the things that we have in there, like the setbacks that aren't compatible, or the, we do have screening requirements, the state legislation is silent on the screening requirements, the applicant has presented those as the language. So, that may be something that could fly, that would be something that would be a test, I think. The setbacks are all pretty consistent, but slightly different. I would suggest that if you did move forward with this, we would make, we would make those setbacks consistent with what the state regulations are, and we'd address those in a table here in our memo. The maximum noise sound limit is 55 decibels. Per the state act, the applicant has indicated 65, which is consistent with our solar ordinance, but I think we could drop that down to the 55 and be consistent with the state requirements. The setbacks that they propose are generally consistent except that the state requirement is 300 feet from the nearest point on the outer wall of a residential structure, and they've suggested 75, so... So, there are some tweaks that I think that we would want to make to this language if you were really intending for this to be a CREEO or a compatible ordinance. I think that if you went forward with this language right now, this particular applicant would probably submitted application and establish their use based on this language that is perhaps slightly more restrictive than the state requirements. But if you're going to go through the effort of updating your ordinance, I would say we'd want to make tweaks to make sure that it is a compatible ordinance, albeit, you know, there may still be some questionable items out there that are not clearly addressed, that are only going to be tested, I think, once this act is in effect and people start regulating in that regard. And so, the two big questions in my mind at this point are, can we regulate it based on zoning district? And can we regulate things like screening over and above the, basically, the state which is silent on those things? So, I believe in their application, they suggested that it would be permissible in light industrial, general industrial, and agricultural residential. So, that's kind of a real brief overview. Like I said, we kind of went over a lot of this back in March, and you have my memo in front of you, and you have the language that the applicant has presented. So, happy to hear discussion, happy to try to answer questions. I know the applicant is here too, if you want to ask them questions.
Battery storage facilities are allowed in residential ag zone areas?
Was that a question, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I just, it's been a while since we touched bases on this stuff. Was the battery storage facility, they're allowed in residential ag areas?
So, currently, we don't have an ordinance that regulates them at all, so they're not, they're not listed as a permitted use in the township. And that was the stance that you all took a year or so ago when we first talked about this. Now, the state legislation has come forward, they're basically saying they would preempt any local zoning to cite one of these things. They did not talk about zoning districts. So, if we updated the ordinance and said it could only be permitted in industrial, or it can only be permitted in rez-ag, or if you did overlay district that only permitted in certain areas or within a certain distance of a power trunk line or something like that, I'm not sure that that language would fly ultimately after we get to November when the state act goes into effect. Not to say that we couldn't try that, that would be, that would be a test that I think the township would have to be willing to engage in and could very well lead to potential litigation if somebody, or the state can simply say, "no, your ordinance is not a compatible ordinance, and you lose your ability to administer." However...
I think that's what we talked about last time, when the state did come out with their ordinance as far as battery one, to see what, what it all entailed before we decided anything, didn't we?
Yeah, so, right, yeah, if you want to, get your public comment, then we can do more discussion, for sure.
You guys have any questions? If anybody wants to speak, just say it again. Yes? Are you the applicant?
I am the applicant, or I represent the applicant. Hi, everybody, my name is Elliot Browning, I'm a project developer for Key Capture Energy. I actually saw a lot of you probably a year and a half ago, about my first week into a job at Key Capture. I was sitting next to a colleague of mine who kind of presented the topic to you initially. I think it was January of 2023. Similar conversation to this, but without a specific text amendment before you for your consideration. We essentially just came and essentially, we were interested in building an energy storage project in your jurisdiction and saw that there was no permitting pathway to do so without getting a text amendment put forth. So, like I just mentioned, we were here kind of introducing energy storage generally. I believe someone from the University of Michigan or Michigan State was here talking about that as well. And at the conclusion of that meeting, it seemed like there's generally not a lot of interest in having an energy storage project, and simultaneously, like Commissioner Frost just mentioned, there's kind of buzz around the state legislature about something happening with respect to permitting. So, we kind of put the project on the back burner, so to speak, just to see what the legislature would do, as Paul just described. They've obviously acted now, so the state has essentially just created this, like permitting preemption of solar, wind, energy storage projects of a certain size threshold. However, the PSC and the, essentially, like, PSC and Eagle generally are interested in developers working with communities and partnering with communities and permitting locally. As a matter of fact, I was just at a conference a month or two ago where one of the chairman of the PSC said something to the effect of, like, "I hope my office gets no applications for this process." They would prefer everyone work with the local jurisdictions, we would prefer to work with the local jurisdiction. So, that's essentially why I'm here before you today. We have worked with our attorneys, we chatted with Paul briefly, and we put forth this text amendment for your consideration today. It's essentially based largely off of the commercial solar ordinance you guys already have in place. Our assumption in drafting this and preparing this for you was that you've already passed this, these provisions, presumably, they were acceptable to you in the solar context, presumably, a similar framework would be acceptable or at least a good starting point to start talking about energy storage. So, essentially, like Paul was describing, at this point in time, there are kind of three pathways through which we can get our project permitted. The first would be for you all to pass a compatible renewable energy ordinance. Like Paul mentioned, those are something that are in line with the state framework, and when you have a compatible ordinance, you are able to compel a developer to permit locally. They are not allowed to go around and get permitted through the PSC. The second option, which is the option that we proposed, was a, what we just like, it's not a legal term, but we're describing it as a workable ordinance. That is an ordinance that is more restrictive than the state's framework, so the local jurisdiction is not allowed to compel the developer to pursue local permitting. However, the workable ordinance is exactly that, it's supposed to be workable. It's supposed to be preserving a town's interests that are important to them while simultaneously being palatable for a developer and something that they can finance and construct and essentially, like, pursue as a viable project. Then, the third option, which is not, like, obviously not ideal or not the preferred pathway, is the state permitting framework. So, essentially, what we put forth for you today is this workable ordinance. We wanted to get something, especially given our context with jurisdiction and your previously articulated concerns around energy storage, we wanted to essentially put forth a first draft for your consideration to essentially adopt regulations that are workable for you as a jurisdiction to protect your township's interests in the context of potential future energy storage developments. So, essentially, I also wanted to be specific here in my conclusion here about what my ask is to you today. Like, I don't really want to get too bogged down in the specific noise requirements, the setbacks. I think it would be helpful for me as the applicant and you as the township here to just provide a general sort of direction as to where the wind's blowing with respect to your stance on energy storage. Like, okay, do we want to scrap the workable idea and go straight to compatible so we can compel any developer who wants to build an energy storage project to come before us? Or, do you want to direct Paul to perhaps work with me to kind of craft a workable ordinance? You guys might discuss whatever interests are important for you all to protect, be that setbacks, or screening, or fire safety, and then we can work together, we can put together a text amendment, and then at a subsequent meeting, you can really hash out the specifics of that amendment. Or, if that's not what you're inclined to do, you can just totally scrap that idea, say, "nope, the state's got this one, we're going to pass on this, table this indefinitely, and we'll see at the PSC in November." So, that's essentially why I'm here, happy to answer any questions you may have about energy storage generally. I know you guys probably have been thinking about this for a while since legislature acted a while ago, but here to be a resource and hopefully to spark one for you going forward, so, thanks.
You guys have any questions out there?
So, this is the current text amendment that they're proposing. It does allow to be on residential ag and dairous, and where it's up against for next year, including subdivision with the million-dollar house sometimes, vehicles, wells, and all that stuff?
Yes.
I think it sounds like an industrial slash, some form of, either light or loose, industrial use, not a residential ag use of the property. Excuse me, just for the purpose of batteries, the chemicals, the storage. And we have miles and miles of IPC wires that they can connect to throughout the township that are connected to industrial property.
Do you have any questions for him?
Well, I don't know.
Just to add, just to add.
From an education standpoint, you know, I guess it's trouble early to talk about technologies and all the other aspects of the G M A C thing as well, but that, obviously, we're all probably here, you know, kind of seeing solar, we're seeing land, but we don't know a whole lot about battery, battery storage of, you know, what we're hearing about the cars, which I know this is different, but it still is something to be concerned about, seeing as how we are all on, you know, well, or water is all coming from the ground and that chemicals could possibly get to me and we're having our fire department or anybody else being able to, you know, deal with whatever happens, so, just reassurance to whoever lives in the entire township.
Bonnie, do you have a question?
I did, but I asked it once before, and I'll probably get the same answer.
Would you like to repeat it?
Well, when we started out, we had a light ordinance, and the light ordinance put in something about storage containers, they were called carnexes. Now, as I understand it, these things that are going to hold batteries are going to be using the same format and the same kind of thing. Now, are we going to make them have roofs over it and cement platforms underneath them like we have for the general public who wants to use a storage container? Or are we just going to let them put up little boxes with whatever they got? And if you remember, Paul said, we don't have a leg to stand on about that. And I think it's kind of ridiculous to have double standards like that.
That's what happened. The state is, is there a restriction on the height of these containers right now from the state?
Don't believe so, but I have to check the language of the act.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. What was the main influencer to being able to drop from 10 acres to five acres for 50,000 megawatt?
For a 50 megawatt project?
Yeah.
That is.
Says reduction in lot size from 10 acres to five acres. What's the biggest knob that got turned that got there?
You know, so I think that was just like accounting for the realities of energy storage. Just doesn't take up as much acreage.
So in our memo, Bart, I think you're referencing the difference between what we have in our solar ordinance versus what they are proposing in battery energy storage. About five acres is really all you need for the megawatt capacity that's regulated. So 10 acres is probably more reasonable for a commercial solar field versus a commercial battery.
Do you have anything that you could provide us that gives a visual or pictures example of a previous project?
Hey Bart, should we call, Paul, should we close? I'm sorry, should we close this?
Yeah, you're right, thank you.
We're still.
Yeah, 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 no, you're good.
All right. That was so, I was going to ask, is there anyone else that has any?
I just want to ask the question, is there a final written document from the state and all the regulations for battery storage? My understanding is it's still in practice.
What they have promised is that the regulations will be ready and out by November.
So there really isn't.
We don't know what they are.
But we're voting on something very cloud likely.
Could I, so the state legislature has passed the law, which has a number of regulations, has use standards specific to each different use and then a litany of application requirements. What, so the PSC still needs to promulgate rules pursuant to that legislation? So like there are points of clarification that the PSC needs to make, but the broad structures of the state preemption are in place? I do, is.
Paul. Okay, sorry, I'll come at them.
I absolutely will.
Me too.
I'm on it. Does anyone else have any questions, contributions? Okay. See how fast Bruce can read that document. What's that?
I'm about to leave the document.
No. If there are no additional contributions, we're not going to lock you up. We just don't usually work that way. We will close the public hearing at 9:04. Okay.
Well, Paul? Question?
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Paul, so as Bruce had said, there are some other sites that are owned industrial. However, if the battery storage facility, does it need to be by the substation? Is that the catch?
So it will need to interconnect to the transmission system at some point. So that can either be through a high voltage line or a transmission level substation.
So you can't just use any other industrial property? You need that substation?
Yeah, it needs to be adjacent to electrical infrastructure or at least have easement access through a parcel or two to electrical infrastructure.
The best business case is being right next to it. Your copper wire is cheap.
We have ITC lines that go completely east and west to north and south to county. There are several locations that have both high tension line, including by the landfill where they even have a generator that added energy to it.
He's saying he needs to be by that substation.
No, he's saying it needs to be by wires that can connect.
He's saying you need to be near infrastructure or have right of way access to that infrastructure.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there any scenario where you don't need to be next to a substation?
So it would be if we were next to a transmission line, that would be an acceptable location. One sort of like overarching issue with respect to the location of the property and like going back to where I said, the PSC needs to issue guidance on this topic, is the state law is silent with respect to whether or not jurisdictions can specify like the zoning districts. So there are like some attorneys who would advise that if a jurisdiction adopts a limitation on zoning districts, then the ordinance is no longer compatible and the township can no longer compel a developer to pursue local regulation. And just to be completely candid with you, I think you're all, or at least you are now, cognizant of fact, like the land interest we have, I guess, yeah, you would be cognizant because we had to identify our land interest to submit this application. It is adjacent to or catty corner to the Coventry Substation off of Tallow Road. So like when.
Same corner of that intersection? Or opposite?
It's kind of like northwest, north of that substation. But the point of that being, in order for us to pursue local permitting, it would need to be a permitted use in the agriculture residential district. So if that is something that as a board is unpalatable for you all, then it'll force our hand and will functionally have to go to the state for permitting.
But I thought, did you just say the answer wasn't there yet? They said they're silent on the jurisdiction.
They're silent?
So in other words, we don't know or we do know?
So the like, it sort of depends.
They're silent, there's no answer, so there's no force to the PSC, is there?
So it depends on your legal interpretation of the issue. This would be.
You want my legal interpretation?
So you're getting into a sort of like wonky area of administrative law. Like how much authority did the legislature confer to the PSC? I think a plain reading of the text is that any, so like the state law did not prohibit or did not specify that it has to be in any district. It says it's allowed essentially functionally out of anywhere. So that for a local jurisdiction to say that it is limited to certain districts, that is necessarily more restrictive than the state framework, which did not. Therefore, like this local law that restricted it to certain districts would be preempted. But that would obviously be your township attorney would want to opine on that and that sort of thing.
So that is where I suggested that that would be a test. That would be something that you would, as a township, test the legislation. And there's, you know, our attorney may advise, as Elliot suggested, against that because of the kind of plain text reading of.
Sure, I'm just trying to follow along and understand when there's no answer that, what the answer is.
Well, it's not that there's no answer. They did not, they did not say anything about the ability to use zoning, to use the zoning district. And so since they didn't say that, the assumption is that it would be permitted in any district. And if restricted by district, then you would not have a compatible ordinance.
Did you guys look at any other properties that if you, I like that, you know, of your three pathways, the Creo method, did you look at anything that would be in our industrial area or general commercial, that section over there?
So the way like our company has historically looked for sites has been to look based off of the analysis of a particular substation, like just in terms of like how the grid works, like the substations are all nodes and they have various characteristics with respect to like essentially how much they're going to cost to upgrade to connect our projects. So all that is to say, when we were looking for locations to build a project, we looked at substations across Michigan. This one looked particularly favorable. So we reached out to the people in the vicinity of this substation, acquired a land interest near the substation. And then where we are limited now is we have put an interconnection request to the regional grid operator for that exact location and that exact point of interconnection. So now at this point in the process, to change the location of the project would functionally put us back at the start of the study process, which would delay the time by four years or so. So like short answer to your question, no, we have not considered other locations in this jurisdiction for our project, just by virtue of how our business kind of structures its acquisition.
I understand.
You said acquired a land and just, do you mean that you actually purchased property? You have the property or you have?
So we have an option to purchase or lease a piece of property.
Things engine upon.
I think this is what we talked about back in March, that if we didn't come up with something, the state was going to force our hand anyways. And it was a no win situation if we could come up with something.
But it almost kind of sounds like if even where there's holes, it's, then it doesn't.
Yeah.
Paul, is there anything in the state right now, on the state side that sits there and talks about a building height?
There is not.
So I think that perhaps the benefit to creating workable ordinance versus a straight compatible ordinance is that you could add some things that would make this project more palatable to the township, like screening, perhaps secondary containment or something if the applicant was willing to do that. And it sounds like, and this is kind of what we all speculate, is that the state doesn't really want to be in the business of doing this permitting. They would rather leave that in the hands of the local jurisdiction as long as they're allowing for it to happen.
I think a lot of the questions are, we don't, and maybe it's for you, Elliot, is we're not seeing what you're willing to work with us on. What are, I mean, the only thing that's out there open is screening is, or that they're silent on is screening. I guess we don't really have an understanding of what you're willing to work with us on to ensure the, you know, the protection of our residents and our community. And the reason we talk about location is on page three, Paul, of your report, proposed language from the applicant is 75 feet from the nearest point on an external wall of any residential structure, but the PA 233 is 300 feet. So would that be an area to work with or?
Yeah.
I mean, I think what he's done is great because sometimes on things like this, you can kind of work better from changing something that's in front of you rather than creating something from a blank sheet of paper. So he's given us a discussion document, you know? Am I going to agree to a 75 when the state says 300? No, not a chance, you know? But once again, kind of parallel to the previous topic, other considerations need to be in there to make this thing complete. And going back again to what is our duty here? We're here to protect our citizens, you know, to make it something that is powerful to them, what's in their best interest. And, you know, I guess my look at it is, you know, once again, maybe it's attorneys, consideration of attorneys is if the state doesn't say it, maybe we say it. And then if there's a hint of litigation or something, well, then maybe we take it out. But I think we got to go in with not just compatible. It needs to be compatible and beyond considering the township.
I think we still have a lot of questions that maybe you can help with. I mean, you know, we talk about like the whole money thing in here, you know, about townships getting what, what some sort of, what is it, 150,000 or?
Oh, yeah, I'd be happy to speak to that.
And because, you know, our tax structure is a little bit different here. I'm sure you're very aware of what it is. And they talk about, you know, contributing tax base or whatnot. That's not really true. So, I mean, I guess, you know, I think what we're looking at is, and our concerns are, with something so new, putting this in the backyard of people, right? Close to their homes, what protections do they have? What can, what is your company willing to do to help protect the residents when there's, you know, like setbacks or if there's a fire, if there's an emergency? You know, all those kinds of things, that's what we're looking at.
I spent Tuesday through Friday of this week at an MIS at a student competition for electric vehicles, judging, recommended, et cetera, et cetera. On Friday afternoon, as I'm pulling out, there was a fire. A battery accumulator, I call them accumulators, went rogue. You know what the instruction was? Don't be downwind. Is there something, you know, so what I'm looking at is things like if the state does not mention something like, you know, you can't be upwind of, you know, up the prevailing wind, the typical, you know, prevailing winds that go through there, you can't be upwind of a residential, you have to be beyond, something like that. We should be deeply considering safety. I asked Paul, do we know if there's a building height? Well, if the state doesn't touch it and they can get from five acres down to two and a half acres by stacking them twice as high, well, if the state doesn't mention it, we should. You know, does it look like a seat tainer or is it, you know, wooden cedar siding? Bring in the whole that discussion. I think we need to go beyond what the state is and feel it out. And, you know, we're in June, they're coming out in November. You know, if we can make a change this quick, we can make a re-change quicker. So if there's something that all of a sudden the state then comes out and we read it letter for letter, you know, dotted I, crossed T, and we say, okay, we're not compatible. We understand that this won't hold up. Let's make this another change to it immediately after, December, January, whatever. I'd say so be it, but I think we have to take the first step in establishing the ground. I think you're also, I mean, we're already crossing the bridge to accept the proposal. You know, as. Yeah, we got to do something. Well, this is the situation, right? The state does not specify, you know, residential. And, you know, what you're proposing to do is to drop this into the back of a lot of people's houses in a residential area. And if it's not specified in the law yet, then maybe it's worth a challenge on the onset. And I don't know what our palette is to take that challenge and then say, okay, we're forced to. But someone needs to give an answer to that to say, hey, is this even allowed in the neighborhood? I mean, you're literally, this is an agricultural residential zone that you guys have identified. We're offering to work with you, but where you want to go is someone's backyard or a lot of someone's backyard. And that's the pushback that we have. We have industrial areas that you could link up to, but because it'll be inconvenient for you guys to the tune of four years, you don't like the idea. And so what we're asking is, is if that's the case, we can either take what you propose and start working with it, or we just take a step back and challenge the initial law that the legislation put out, that they're going to give clarification to, but challenge it. This is in someone's backyard and that needs to be specified first. And then I think the conversation can start as to whether or not we want to include setbacks or whatever the case may be. I think there's a bigger conversation here and I don't know what our city's palette is for litigation, but, you know, that can't be looked, that can't be looked over.
Well, that's why I said if there's no answer, why is the assumption?
Well, I mean, some.
I guess I thought it was just me though.
Does the state call for any secondary containment to be brought on site or?
It does not.
No? So, I mean, we might want to look at that.
I asked her last time, at what temperature does steel? I asked her last time, at what temperature does steel melt? At what temperature lithium batteries burn at? There you go.
So, I think to that question, if you guys are interested in that kind of thing, like if you're interested in environmental concerns, maybe these are questions that you ask of the applicant, where they're willing to work with you and what that looks like, and see if it's something that you find acceptable. I don't know if you guys have explored doing secondary containment, or what kind of information you have about the technology. Back to Bruce's original question, what technologies are you using? What are the environmental protections? What can we as a community expect to see out of you?
In addition to environmental concerns, if it's in somebody's backyard and we have no recourse on setbacks, that's concerning.
Would we, I'm sure there's some sort of third-party safety recommendation company that, could we maybe speak with someone along those lines, you know, not affiliated with either one of us, and just bring him in and say, hey, what are the things we need to consider? What are the things we need to look at here? What are the right questions to be asking? And learn on this.
Because this is, yeah, it's new to everybody, you know.
I love you, man, but Fox isn't in charge of the hen house, you know, that's, you know.
No, I think...
Yeah, so I think having somebody that can really speak to these things, I mean, they got to be out there, I mean, just automotive.
I'd still like to know what you're willing to work with us on.
I see why I park that thing on my grass and it never goes in my drive, in my garage.
I'd still like to know, what are you willing to work with us on? What are the general topics without getting in, I know you said the weeds of setbacks, but there's a huge difference between 75 feet and 300 feet. I don't, that's not, those aren't weeds in a residential area.
And I think that should, if anything comes into that wording, it should be potential, existing or potential residential.
Or just the property line of your own parcel.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have setbacks and stuff like that, but yeah.
So what, what are you willing to work with?
No, so I think like the sentiment that's underlying all these comments is, right, like, this is your opportunity to determine as a community, like, what interests are important for you to protect? Like, we are amenable to working with secondary containment, like, if there are concerns around that sort of thing. We're amenable to addressing specific environmental concerns, or specific fire safety concern. Like, we are not in the business of building, like, cumbersome, clunky, unsafe projects. These are very expensive, valuable assets for us, and we want to build them in a way that the community in which we build them is pleased with and supports and partners with us on. One, like, there are concerns about, like, wind and things, I think a lot of these things could be addressed in setbacks, particularly from, like, adjacent residences, although I, like, just thinking of where this parcel is, there's really not, it's really like an agricultural area with a lot of footage in between it and any other resident, yeah.
Quick question, but how many charge-discharge cycles do you get out of one pack, one building? Like, if you...
Typically, we charge and discharge the battery like one cycle per day.
I understand. How many of those do you get?
In total?
Yeah. What's the lifetime until, like, the pack only comes back to 65%?
So, yeah, energy storage projects, like, useful life is estimated between 20 and 30 years, but we plan for augmentation. So like, to your point, you're familiar with, like, batteries degrading over time with their usage. The project footprint will be designed such that you can add containers, so that as certain cells or certain modules within the system degrade over time, you add completely new ones to supplement, such that it still has the same throughput in terms of power.
Yeah, but, okay, I was, charge-discharge cycles per that cell? I mean, you know, 500 is a lot of charge-discharge cycles for a lithium ion, so you're talking under a year and a half, once a day, right?
Right.
So...
I think, I think this would be a question, like, better suited for an engineer or someone, yeah.
I have one more question. Elliot, you want to work with us, and I, I understand it. Have you, have you walked that property? Have you walked up and down Tower Road? Have you walked up and down Joy Road?
I have. I guess not Joy Road, but I have walked up and down Tower Road. And there are residences along there.
Yeah, there's a bunch. There's a bunch of residences. There's homes, there's horses. This is, this is an agricultural residential neighborhood, and you guys have applied to drop your containers right in the backyard of a residential neighborhood. For me personally, and certainly, you know, we can discuss this, this is a situation where I think the state needs to be challenged on their initial zoning requirements. It may be going to fill battle, but I think it needs to be fought. You know, I don't think we should sit here and just start accepting the proposed languages. This is a residential neighborhood. And, you know, don't tell me where you live, but if they were to come drop one in your backyard, do you care about setbacks? No, because you're like, I can still see it, whether it's 50 or 300 feet, the wind still blows, you can't stop that. You know, there's still a lot of situations that you don't have to live next to, or that your management doesn't have to live next to, that the residences do. There's water that can be affected, there's air that can be affected. We want to work with you, and if you truly want to work with us, I'm sure we can expedite approval into our industrial areas next to power lines, and she could transfer your energy back and forth to. But the reason you're getting pushed back is because you're looking to put your project, right, behind a bunch of houses. And I would encourage you to walk up and down Joy Road around 6 o'clock at night and see the kids riding bikes, see the horses running around. These are people. And I think we, we need to start thinking a little bit more about challenging the initial ruling as opposed to accepting the language of this proposal.
It's a start across. I mean, it's a, it's a start across.
Four, four years for a company may be a long time, but when somebody plants their family there, it's the rest, the rest of their life is decades. So it's, it is important. But like you said, that's why I asked, have we looked at something else? I kind of figured the answer was no, because you're going to go to, I understand that process. If we knew more back when, when you guys were here, maybe we could have made that recommendation, but honestly, none of us really knew that much, and we didn't even know what to ask in the first place. But location is hugely important for us and how close it is to our family members.
Absolutely. And just to briefly respond to...
And farms.
To briefly respond to Commissioner Huntsman's point, I totally acknowledge, like, very, very real visceral concern for the, like, the families in that area. Just the point about, like, conformity with, with the broader area, one point I like to raise is that this, this facility is going to be comparable in size to the existing transmission substation that already exists there. So it's not as if we are, this is like an unadulterated vista of, like, perfectly scenic farmland. There is, there are large transmission lines, and there's a big buzzing transmission infrastructure station. So we're not going to be completely perturbing, pristine, unused land. There is already a very, like, large...
Do you want to discuss this?
I mean, I'm just, I'm just like raising...
What happens if a capacitor burns? What happens to my well water? What happens to me breathing down?
I mean, these are specific, these are specific concerns that you could address in your zoning ordinance.
Yep. It's same in some ways, but in different manners.
All right. We didn't want to get in weeds, but I think the weeds are all we have to talk about.
Yeah. Paul, I would love to, I would love to talk to an expert, an expert that understands how, you know, worst of works, how can these things get, what are the best mitigation steps to require?
I hear your questions. Yep, so I think we can reach out and try to find potentially a third party who can help to answer some of these questions. I think that, you know, we may be able to reach out to folks at the state and ask the question, you know, how, how do we expect them to come down on this zoning issue, right?
Like, UTL, United Technologies, that before, you know, using UTL listed on your plugs and outlets and things like that, I wouldn't doubt they have something.
We'll, we'll find something, and we'll bring answers back to you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So is geography not something you guys are willing to work with?
I, I think, I think we would probably pursue the state, the state pathway before, just given, given our, like...
Sure.
Our financial investment in the project to date.
Sure. Linda.
Mike's made a very good point. The state doesn't live in Salem Township. And this is well worth that legal battle to say that we have the right home rule, and we believe, from everything I've heard you say tonight, that this application belongs in industrial, doesn't belong in somebody's backyard. And I think it's worth that fight, that you guys should do what you think is right for this community, because the state doesn't know how to get it right. And you got a referendum now, they're out collecting signatures to put the citing of solar in, wind back into the hands of the local jurisdictions. Don't cave because you got an applicant here. At the very least, if you go to court, it's going to take you time that might be on our side.
Well, I, Linda, I love it, I agree. Do, can we even say at this point, there would be a fight, from what we know from the state?
We don't know.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think maybe it's, go to the state and say, hey, state, great you're doing this, understand you're, you're, this is the way you're going, but put something into this language. Put it only in industrial, commercial. We have areas in our township that someone came in and said, okay, whatever level, but we have areas, if they want to come in, great, it's zoned for that, the local fire department can handle that, be there in two seconds instead of at the more, you know, like, the urban service district and respond to it. Maybe it's, it's the time we just go to the state and say, please put, put language in here in this way.
Maybe that's something that our expert can help recommend, of how we can go that avenue. And when you say putting up, putting up a fight for something that's important for us, we're...
I think you need to create an ordinance, create an ordinance...
Yes.
That spouts, scolds this out. Board of Trustees would agree with this, that it needs to be done.
And we started on it.
And if we need to go for a fight, we'll go for a fight, so. But we need to create that ordinance.
Yes, well, and we just, we did start it, we did start it. We just, and it was what, like, two months ago, maybe three months now? And we just need to finish it, but now we, now we know a little bit more than we, what we did three months ago. We still need some little bit of expert in there to help us, and then we can take it step by step. And fortunately for us, we're not a typical township that is understaffed and under budget.
Well, and Pam, the other thing we just heard tonight, too, is that if the applicant doesn't like your ordinance, he's willing to have a fight. So we already know that. Make the ordinance right for Salem, don't worry about the applicant, because he's already told us, and it's on video, that if he doesn't get what he wants, he's going to fight it. So do, do what you guys think are right. And you guys have said over and over tonight, that's why you're sitting at that table, is to do what's right. And go back to your, your master plan, somebody touched about the health, safety, and welfare of the community. You have very clearly defined reasons why you have a master plan, why you have a zoning ordinance. And don't let somebody tell you, hey, if I don't get what I want, we're going to have a fight. Okay, we're, we've already said, we'll fight. We've got the rights in.
No, I think we're all on the same page in this, and we always talk about the master plan, and it's what's got us, so, yeah.
That's the last thing, and just, just for you, like, I understand that you're just a face, and so this is, this is just, you know...
That's not personal.
This is just us discussing. But certainly, you know, notice that Salem Township does want to work with you, we just want to work on different terms. So please share our heart, you know, with your, you know, with your higher-ups, you know, but we are going to fight for, you know, for our people and, and, kind of our position. But certainly, if you're open to a conversation, the doors are open, and we certainly can help expedite things for you, so it won't take that four-year, you know, proposed, maybe thought. So we can have a good relationship, and we can work together. And if not, then, you know, I understand that, too, but I just wanted to make, you know, that public.
It was a promise of a fight, there was a promise of they'd go to state, right? Which is, you know, just starts in November, maybe the state can actually deliver something.
Well, you know, we're always trying to work with people, whether it's the, whether it's the coffee shop, the flower bar, we, we, we're trying to create something and not just have a book or let people just come in and all over the township, but I mean, the safety and well-being of our community, people, people want to live here for a reason, and it's up to us to help protect it and represent all of them.
Can I, can I throw something in? What's the name of your business?
Enchanted Oven.
Enchanted Oven, so we keep calling it the Flower Bar.
Oh. There's so much traffic, I don't get over there.
But at least it moves.
Does it move? Not if you're coming from Man Harbor.
They've got great breakfast sandwiches.
Do they?
Yeah.
No, it's a cute, it's a cute area, and I'm glad it's open again, I didn't realize.
And if I may say, you know, if, if we don't make it competitive for small businesses, then there won't be anything left to be cute. They'll all look the same, and all look like Starbucks, and all look like...
Oh, no, that's not happening.
It will eventually happen, because small businesses don't even have a fighting chance right now.
No, we understand, we understand. But like we said, we're getting off topic now, but it's not just that location, right? We've got to consider the whole township, so. But six by six, we should be able to do that. Okay. Does anybody else have any more, any more questions? And Mike, that was a, that was a great ending point, because we do want to, we do want to work with, you know, the organization, but location is important to us.
And one final comment that I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, the Eagle has stood up some program called Renewables Ready Communities Award. It is a state-run grant program that gives communities who permit and host eligible renewable projects, of which ours would be one, $5,000 per megawatt, which is $3,000 per megawatt more than a community is entitled through, to, through a host development agreement. So for a project of our size, that would, going through the state permitting process, that would be $200,000. Permitting locally and then receiving the grant would be $500,000.
Define renewable energy.
Renewable, I mean, it's, I mean, it's interesting, somewhat pedantic topic, because like, no, like, it's like, battery energy storage, we're charging for a mix of energy on the grid as a standalone project, not technically renewable, but it is often lumped under that, that umbrella. But as define, as...
Define, define storage.
More weeds, more weeds.
Let's, let's find this game.
No, we're not playing it, we're playing it on your own time.
Define storage.
We know what storage is.
Just real quick, it's important here, because I think you need to know, see, you know, obviously, tell your people, we appreciate, you know, understanding that there is money out there. This is not about money. And just to be very clear to your, you know, your management, you know, we don't need it. We want to preserve the land for people, animals, that kind of thing. So I appreciate the thought there, but that holds no weight with us.
Understood.
Okay. So...
Okay, I make a motion to postpone action and direct staff to make changes to proposed language for the regulation of commercial-scale battery energy storage systems as discussed at tonight's meeting for further consideration.
Okay, shall we do a roll call vote, please?
None.
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Huntsman, yes? Lewandowski?
Yes.
Lockman?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Rizan?
Yes.
Call approved.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Number nine, old business items, none, response of commissioners and correspondents, board of trustees, welcome back.
Thank you. I guess the only thing that we permit to us is that we're going to work on any drafting of special assessment district wording for the USD.
No business.
Land preservation and conservation?
Meeting tomorrow night, and we'll be looking at, talking about some potential opportunities that we might be able to put together for preserving some properties, and also working on...
Okay. Planning consultant review?
So there's a couple of projects that are in the works. We did speak to the gentleman who owns, well, we tried to speak to the gentleman who owns the party shop at the corner of North Territorial and Old North Territorial, they're looking to potentially update that site and turn it into a gas station. As you heard tonight, Edith's has submitted an application to re-establish that as a gas station and potentially a drive-through. And then there are a couple of projects that we're looking at on Chub Road in the industrial area. These are existing sites that are adding additions or modifying their site, or a new site off of Chub Court. So all, all those are kind of in the works and as soon as those site plants are ready, we'll bring them up.
Anything on Seven Mile and Pontiac Trail, Matt?
Seven Mile and Pontiac Trail.
Little log cabin store?
Uh, no, I did speak to that, the owner of that property and he's looking at different opportunities to bring in some additional income, whether that be a restaurant or, he did talk about the potential of petitioning, the township to look at doing food trucks and that may be a conversation that we might want to have in the future, whether or not we want to allow for or regulate food trucks. So, and then Mr. Stromber, who's here in the audience tonight, is getting really close on the landscape supply facility, so we're excited to see that open up and get running. Everybody's been watching, watching your progress for a long time here, so.
Guys know what the name of that place is?
Salem Gardens.
Salem Gardens.
Salem Gardens.
Salem Gardens.
Salem Gardens.
They just put their township name right on that thing.
That's nice.
That's on, you're ready in two weeks.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes, April 15th, 2024.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 15th, 2024 as submitted.
I second it.
All those in favor of approving the minutes of April 15th, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed? None. Public comment? Chairperson comment? None. Adjournment is? Oh, you had the wrong hours. 9:44? 9:44, thank you.
Just a quick question for you, I'm having trouble locating.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Maybe a mile away.
I might be a mile, I'm on Dixon, I'm in South.
Oh, yeah. So I can't wait, you know.
I'm trying to make that, I got a conversation.
Yeah, it looks really nice.
Yeah, I can't believe what I am.
We have, we have two muskets, we saw yesterday, probably on board.